Okay, it's 6:00 PM and we'll call this regular meeting of the Kerrville City Council to order February the 27th, 2018. And we ask that all your cellphones be turned in the off position unless they have a cool ringtone, then you can leave it kind of soft. And we'll start out this morning, this evening, by the invocation offered by Councilman Warren Ferguson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Stuart Kenyis. You may stand if you wish.
Please bow your heads as I pray. Heavenly Father, we're all thankful for your many abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for a sense of welfare and the true needs of our citizens, for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibility. Grant us the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our work with clarity and accuracy, our deliberations with wisdom, and our decisions with impartiality. Holy God, we are sorry for our sin. Help us to remember we live because of you. Help us to do what you want us to do through Jesus our Lord. And all God's children said, "Amen."
Amen.
Amen.
All right, and the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, for getting us started today. Item number one is announcements of community interest. Mr. Kenyis, stay right where you are and catch us up.
I will. All right, thank you. And good evening to everyone. We don't have a lot tonight, but actually, we've got a couple of fun things, so we'll be quick on this. First thing I have up here is the library will be holding its third annual March Madness Battle of the Books, and that starts this Thursday. This is your chance to vote on your favorite classic children's book, and y'all pay attention to them because I'm gonna do a straw poll here in just a second. The five books fighting for the top spot are Black Beauty by Anna Sewell, Charlotte's Web by E.B. White, Wrinkle in Time by Madeline LaIngle, Secret Garden by Frances H. Burnett, and Charlie and the Chocolate Factory by Roald Dahl. Voting's gonna take place on the main floor of the library. All ages are welcome to participate, so anybody here can vote. And the winner will be announced on Friday, March 31st. Okay, I'm gonna have to go with Charlotte's Web. Read it in grade school, and anybody who can make you cry over the death of a spider, I just figure that's probably pretty good writing. So I'm just gonna take a quick poll, who's with me on Charlotte's Web? Well, we might as well stop right there.
Chocolate.
How about Black Beauty?
Black Beauty.
All right. Wrinkle in Time? Nobody read it.
There are wrinkles in here.
Just wrinkles.
We've got a lot of wrinkles.
We're against wrinkles.
The Secret Garden? All right. I always thought it was Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory, but apparently it's Charlie. Charlie and the Chocolate Factory?
Yay, chocolate.
All right, there's one over here.
Plagiarism.
Well, I'm gonna tell Laura that I think Charlotte's Web won it. All right. Another thing at the library, if it comes up, there it is. Library is also celebrating the National Education Association's 21st Annual Read Across America Day. That will be this Saturday, March 3rd, 3:00 PM. And they're gonna have crafts and a movie. Starts at 3:00 PM, like I said, and this is a free event, and it coincides with the birthday of Dr. Seuss. So readers of all ages are encouraged to celebrate. Again, Dr. Seuss, we all grew up with him. It's funny how we can forget what happened yesterday, but we can remember, "I do not like green eggs and ham, I do not like them anyway." Rest my case. All right, and the very last thing is the Kerrville Farmers Market. That's this Friday, 3:00 PM to dark, Dallas Dock Tree Boardwalk Pavilion. Of course, that's down here. This market features locally sourced produce, meat, eggs, bread, cheese, wine, and more. How many people have been to one of these before? All right, it's a lot of fun. Still in the small stages, but it's growing every month, and there's gonna be a time when it'll take up a whole block down there. So we're looking forward to that. Y'all check it out. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Stuart. Item number three will be deferred to the next meeting. I thank you for being here this evening, Roman, but we need to get that approved before we actually present it. Members of the Youth Commission here then...
Mayor, do we have item number two?
Item number two is Visitors and Citizens Form. I guess I skipped it because I don't have any in. It is not scheduled. Anybody not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the City Council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the form to give it to the City Secretary. City Council may not discuss or take action on an item, may place the issue on a future agenda. The number of speakers limited to the first 10. Each speaker's limited to four minutes. Again, I didn't have any forms submitted. Would anyone like to speak this evening from the audience? If not, we will then ask for approval on the consent agenda, which is items 4A, B, C, and D. Does any member of the council wish to have any of these removed, or any member of the audience?
Mayor, I'd like to remove 4D.
All right. Then I would entertain a motion on 4A, B, and C.
So moved.
With a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
With a motion and a second. A motion carries 4 to 0. Item number 4D.
Yes, Mayor, I had a question. We weren't required to plat this property. Is that the five-acre minute, or is that the five-acre rule? I've had comments from the public asking why was this thing being platted?
Well, we plan to plat it as soon as we get this piece in-house and then another easement. We're gonna go through the fact, I think we have a plating meeting tomorrow to start that process.
Okay.
Yeah, so the whole, both sides will be platted.
Does that answer the question? I see no other speakers here. If not, then any discussion, further discussion from council? I would entertain a motion on 4D to authorize.
I move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Cast your vote. Motion carries 4 to 0. At this time, council, I'd like to ask that we move up item number 7A so that our guests could get this already underway, in case the, is that all right, to move with consensus to move up item number 7A?
Yes.
Okay. Then item number 7A, move up here, is a presentation acceptance of the fiscal year 2017 City of Kerrville Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Ms. Yarborough.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for moving this up on the agenda. As you know, the City of Kerrville and all municipalities are required by local government code to have an annual audit, and Karen Curtin with BKD is here to do our presentation this evening.
Welcome, Ms. Curtin, again.
Thank you, Mayor White, members of the city council. This is BKD's seventh year to perform the financial statement audit for the City of Kerrville, and I'm very happy to be here this evening to share the results with you. As a result of the audit procedures performed, BKD is pleased to issue two unmodified or clean opinions. The first report that we will be issuing is the Independent Auditor's Report on the Basic Financial Statements and the Independent Auditor's Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting and on Compliance and Other Matters Based on an Audit of the Financial Statements Performed in accordance with Government Auditing Standards. In addition, we are pleased to report that there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting that were identified as part of our audit procedures performed. The significant accounting policies for the city are present in the notes to the financial statement, Note 1. We would like to call your attention to some areas that are subject to judgments and accounting estimates. Those are the pension obligation, the self-insured claims and judgments liabilities, allowance for doubtful accounts receivable, landfill closure and post-closure care liabilities. For example, the pension obligation is determined through an actuarial study, and so that, for example, is one item where the city isn't determining, per se, what the liability is, but it's done by this actuarial estimate. I'd also like to add that for fiscal year 16, that the city received the very prestigious Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for their comprehensive annual financial report, and we expect that the city will receive the 44th, excuse me, 34th award next year for its fiscal year 17 report. I thought I'd give you an overview of the CAFER and a few highlights. The CAFER, I think of as sort of a large book with bookends. The front of the CAFER includes the introductory section, which includes the letter of transmittal and certificate of achievement in financial reporting, and the back end is the statistical section. Those are both unaudited sections, and in the center is essentially the meat of the report, which we refer to as the financial section. That includes the Independent Auditor's Report, Management's Discussion and Analysis, the basic financial statements, notes, required supplementary information, and the combining fund statements. If you only have 30 minutes or so to look over the CAFER and don't want to read the full 112 pages, I suggest that you take a good look at the management discussion and analysis, and that's where you'll get an overview of the activity for the year and comparisons from year over year. And then also take a look at the back, the statistical section. That gives you 10-year trend information, so if you want to see how the city has been progressing over the last 10 years, the statistical section is the place to look. The reporting entity is, for the most part, audited by BKD. That includes the city and its two discreetly presented component units, the Economic Improvement Corporation and K-Pub, the Public Utility Board. The joint venture, which is the Kerrville Kerr County Airport Board, is audited by another auditor, and we take their information and fold it into the CAFER. And you have received, as a council, the draft financial statement section of the CAFER, and we expect to issue the final report this week. As an overview, I put together a slide of the revenue breakout of the governmental activities, and as just sort of a brief overview, what you're seeing here is the revenue that comes in through about 30 different funds, governmental funds, that the finance department maintains. These are maintained on a modified accrual basis, which is somewhat similar to cash accounting in that there are not long-term assets or long-term liabilities. Most of the city's funds are coming in through property taxes and sales and use taxes, followed by charges for services. And this pie is gonna, you know, grow and shrink each year somewhat, but in general, the proportions are going to remain about the same from year to year. The largest governmental fund is the general fund. When we present the general fund in the CAFER, it's a combination of nine smaller funds, and so when you're trying to compare your budget for Fund 1, that won't be a direct comparison to what's in the CAFER, because several smaller funds are wrapping up into the CAFER presentation. The governmental expenses primarily are consumed by public safety, number one, as would be expected, followed by the general government, and then culture and recreation. And again, you're gonna see some variances in the numbers from year to year, but the general proportions will remain fairly consistent. The governmental fund statements are Exhibits 3 and 5 in the document that you've been given. Those are on the modified accrual. Then they are converted to full accrual to include your long-term capital assets and long-term debt, and that's what you see on Exhibits 1 and 2. To go from those modified accrual to the full accrual statements, there's two converting statements, and those are 4 and 6 in your packets. The city also maintains approximately seven funds on the full accrual basis that we call business-type activities. These activities are designed to be self-supporting. The, obviously, the largest fund there is the Water and Sewer Fund, and that is contributing the majority of the revenue for the business-type activities, and the golf course kicks in 7% or so, but the majority of the revenue, as would be expected, is coming in from water and sewer. Your internal service funds are also on a full accrual basis. And the next slide shows the expenses again, as would be expected. Water and sewer is the majority of the expenses of the business-type activities, as they're contributing the majority of the revenue. I put in a slide on primary government debt per capita, just to give you some trend information. Again, you would find this information in the statistical section of the report. Going from, comparing '16 to '17, you'll see that the total primary government debt per capita has decreased, and the large driver of that is that there was no new debt issued in 2017, and existing debt was paid down. The next slide covers the general fund fund balance, and again, this is the combination of several funds wrapped up, not just Fund 1, but want to point out that the unassigned fund balance for the city has been steadily increasing, which is a positive sign. At the end of fiscal year 17, it was 8.4 million, an increase of 6.8% from the prior year. And looking ahead to 2018, it's 32% of the budgeted general fund expenditures, which is a very healthy number. The city's internal target is 25%, so you've exceeded your internal target, and the Government Finance Officers Association recommends that cities maintain at least two months, or approximately 16% in unassigned fund balance. So the city's internal designation is higher than that, and the actual results are even higher than that. It's very healthy. In the Water and Sewer Fund, I did a similar slide for you on the unrestricted net position. Again, that is increasing. It is 11.6 million and is 100% of the 2018 budgeted expenditures for water and sewer. And just as a reminder, this is not a cash position. This is net position, which is included in the Water and Sewer Fund, includes all of the capital assets, all underground pipes and infrastructure, net of your liabilities, including the long-term debt. So its net position is not a cash position.
Can I ask a question there?
Yes, sir.
Why, why is that standard way of doing things in Water and Sewer that it's, you know, not liquid assets, really? Why do they do that with the capital improvements being part of the position?
Sure. The Water and Sewer Fund is a proprietary fund. It's designed to be self-supporting, and it's maintained on the full accrual basis. So the net position is the assets, including the long-term, less the liabilities, gives you the net. It's just the structure of the way the fund is maintained. If you want to see what the cash position is, then you'll want to go to Exhibit 7 and look at the cash and investments, and that's where you'll see that number. This is really just a residual. Theoretically, if you were to liquidate all of the assets and all the liabilities, but of course, you can't do that for the pipes underground. It's not, not practical. I also put a slide in here on pensions. Pensions is always a big point of discussion. The net pension liability for 2017 is 8.1 million, slight increase from 2016 when it was 6.95. This is the number that I was mentioning earlier, is actuarially determined by the actuaries of the Texas Municipal Retirement System, and it will vary quite a bit from year to year. The biggest driver on this is the market, the stock market. So when returns are good, more money comes into the plan, and that helps to boost up the fiduciary net position. When there's a down year and not as much money comes in as expected, then that number drops. And it's so significant that, as part of the standard, the actuaries are required to calculate the sensitivity of the net pension liability. So this is a number that you'll see in every city's CAFER. The current long-term rate of return that is expected is 6.75%, and that is what yields the $8.1 million liability. If the long-term rate of return were to increase just 1%, then the city, instead of having a liability, would have an asset of a half million. If it were to decrease 1% to 5.75%, the city's liability would increase to 18.4 million. So you can see that that number is volatile. I'd like to remind you that it's not a cash number. That is a long-term liability for all of the existing employees and all the, all the ones that were going through the system. So the, the way that that, as far as sort of, if you want to think about the budget, the city makes a required contribution that is calculated by TMRS. TMRS tells the city how much they need to pay in each month, and the city pays 100% of that. So the city has made all of their required contributions, and as a result, the plan is approximately 90% funded for the city. And just to give you kind of a sense of where a couple of the, a couple of other cities are, the City of Houston, which does not participate in TMRS, has a funding level of approximately 53%. And the City of San Antonio, which does participate in TMRS, has a funding level of approximately 73%. So the City of Kerrville, sitting around 90%, is, it's a, it's a nice place to be. Moving on to future standards, I added a couple of slides as, just something to let you know what's, what's coming down the road. There is a new summary, excuse me, a new statement, GASV 87, which will be effective for the city's fiscal year 2021, that is going to remove the distinction between capital and operating leases. The city currently has several operating leases for small items such as golf carts. When this statement takes effect, all leases will become capital leases, which means that there will be a liability recognized on the books and an offsetting right to use asset. So the leases that are currently in place will be largely retired by the time this statement comes into effect, but if the city is considering future or leases in the future over the next few years, you may want to consider how this statement will affect your financial statements on a go-forward basis. So I wanted to bring it to your attention. And the next item I wanted to bring to your attention is a proposed new standard on capitalized interest. Currently, the city must capitalize interest in its enterprise funds, and with the new standard, governments will not be doing that. Interest will be a period expense. That doesn't change cash flow or budgeting, but again, just to let you know, that will be a change. It's proposed to be effective for fiscal year 2020. So again, we have a few years, just want to let you know what may be coming down the road. In closing, I'd like to thank Sandra Yarborough and Amy Dozier for their assistance in preparing the audit this year. It went very well. We're planning to issue a, where we were last year. Are there any questions?
Counsel? Any questions? I don't see any, and I suppose if there are, I had a few leaves turned in here, but I'd like to do it privately, and we won't take the time to do that today.
Absolutely. I'm available anytime, if you'd like to.
I appreciate that. It was helpful last year to go upstairs and do, you know, page by page, sort of, but I suppose if we have those questions, we'll defer, refer to our staff here.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Nice report, and congratulations, staff. Looks good. All right, and you can take off without any rain early.
Thanks.
So we will move back at this point. Oh, we have to have a motion to accept the CAFER, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to accept.
Second.
Presented, and a second. And motion carries 4 to 0. Okay, we'll return back to item number 5A, which is ordinance number 2018-08, an ordinance approving a tariff authorizing an annual rate review mechanism, an RRM, as a substitution for the annual interim rate adjustment process defined by Section 104 301 of the Texas Utilities Code and is negotiated between Atmos Energy Corp., Mid-Tex Division, and the Steering Committee of Cities served by Atmos. Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This is an annual exercise that you all need to go through and, for action, both first reading and second reading. I think the Agenda Bill pretty much spells everything out. This is a first reading of an ordinance that, if adopted, will approve a rate settlement with Atmos Energy Corporation, known locally as Atmos Gas. Of course, the Agenda Bill provides some history of the process and the current status of the revised rate review mechanism, a process that the city, as a member of the Atmos City Steering Committee, has agreed to and used since, I believe, 2007, and we use this process to review rate increases as requested by Atmos. And again, the recitals in the ordinance do a good job, I think, of reminding us of the process and the action involved. Whenever, basically, Atmos seeks a rate increase, they must provide notice to the city, and we then have an opportunity to review and challenge the proposed rate increase. The process used to review and negotiate rate increase is through the RRM tariff, as the mayor mentioned, which was originally adopted by the steering committees back in 2007 as an alternative to the state process, and I think both, both parties, both the steering committee and Atmos would agree that it's certainly a less cumbersome and a less costly process. This year, the RRM reduced the return of equity from 10.5% to 9.85% and accounted for the recent reduction in federal corporate taxes. And I learned that there, there should be a rate reduction by mid-March that customers should, should see. But the Steering Committee, it's legal counsel, and then our consultants recommend that the cities adopt this ordinance as, as a way of negotiating this rate settlement. And so this is the first reading, and I'm asking for approval tonight, and we'll be back in, in first meeting in, in March for the second reading. And Atmos is here tonight, if you want to talk to them.
Any questions by council? I know this is something we standardly do each year. Did you have a question?
No, I don't.
All right, if not, I would entertain a motion on first reading of ordinance number 2018-08.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Motion carries 4 to 0. Thank you, Ms. Trace. Item number 5B, ordinance number 2018-09, an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, by amending Section 10-3 licensing requirements fees by reducing the applicable fee for alcoholic beverage licenses containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause, providing for an effective date ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject. Councilman Broody, I believe you wish for this to be on the agenda?
Oh, okay, yes, I did. So I guess the place to start would be to basically say why, why I asked for it to be on the agenda. Basically, whenever we got ordinances, whether they're new or amended, that's the time to evaluate whether we're doing it in a kind of a clean, unambiguous way, not to mention the policy choices you make in it. And a lot of times, the government does a real good job with the, answering the questions of what, when, where, and how, but we leave out the why. So to answer the why, we're bringing, I'm bringing this back up, even though we just passed something a couple of months ago, is basically this. The ordinance as we passed it a couple of months ago, at a minimum, had a couple of, for lack of a better term, ambiguous aspects to it. The goal of that one was to incentivize, I guess you'd say, the craft agriculture, I guess, industry. And so we singled out, we attempted to single out a couple of TABC licenses to reduce that fee, the city fee. And in the ordinance as it was passed, it said, I forgot what it actually is exactly. And in the ordinance as it was passed, it said, I forget what it actually exactly it said, except for everybody would pay half of what TABC.
I don't know.
Everybody would pay half of what TABC charged them and to the city, except for a brewer's permit, a brew pub license, or a license issued for a similar business. And it's that, or license issued for a similar business that I kind of took exception to. And it would have been better, I think, if we had identified the licenses that we were trying to do specifically. And then it also says, in which case, the city shall charge the fee applicable for an on-premises retailer, which again, TABC has more than one on-premises retailer license. And so at a minimum, I would have liked to have seen those codes, the TABC codes, just specifically listed there. The suggestion that I had, that I made, was to modify the words so that, as you see, it says, the city fee would end up being one-half of the permit or license fee paid to the state or $200, whichever amount is lower. And the reason that number 200 was picked was because when we did this original ordinance in January, the number that we were going to reduce those two TABC licenses to, I think, was, was it 175 or was it 150? Does anybody?
I think it was 175.
Okay. And so I just picked that out there as a number that would be relatively same amount of impact, and then make it clean so it's across the board rather than identifying the actual codes, the specific codes, so we're not kind of having a pipe and plow discount. We basically reduce it for everybody. That was the suggestion originally. And then after looking at or asking for some numbers about what that would impact our current fees, at the end of this, I'm going to sort of leave it up to counsel decide what to do with it. But basically, if it was left at this $200, in the last five years, prior to this change, we're collecting on average $10,000 worth of fees for the alcohol and beverage fee to the city. If, and of that $10,000, about $6,400 is represented by licenses that would be affected by this, I guess is the best way to put it. So leaving it as is with that $200 number, we essentially are reducing our revenue in this fee annually by about $4,500. So that number was a lot higher than I expected it to be. So my proposal is to do one of two things. I still want to clean it up so that it's specific and unambiguous. So one way to achieve this would be just make it specific and only identify those two TABC licenses. And the impact obviously goes down quite drastically because I believe there's only two that are affected by that. The downside is that it appears that we're singling people out for favor. The other way is to take that $200 number and raise it up. If we raise it to just $400, then our net loss, I guess you'd say, of revenue is like $2,500. And with that, we still have the blanket statement where everybody's on the same playing field, and we're still incentivizing the industry that we want to. So I guess at that point, opening up for discussion if anybody has. Me personally, I would prefer to have it be across the board and raise that number up. That's what I would prefer to see happen.
400 is the number?
Four, yeah. I mean, to raise it up to where it's zero, to get zero impact, you'd have to raise it up to, I think it's $695, which is actually effectively reducing it for everybody. But, so that's your break-even dollar amount. And I'm not suggesting that, I'm actually suggesting 400, if that makes sense.
Yeah, Mr. Ferguson?
Well, I understand what you're saying, George, but I think I'd like to get closer to break even than $400. And I'm inclined to suggest 450, 475, something in that order.
Yeah. I mean, if we go, if we went to 500, essentially, we're probably, the loss is like $1,200, $1,300. That's what we're talking about there.
Then I would amend the year suggested amount to $500, if anybody.
Would you lead me slowly through that math? How can we gain $4,500 by raising two fees by 200 or even 300?
We're not raising two fees.
We're raising fees for everybody.
Yeah, so what it was, was, so we're currently collecting revenue $10,000 in a year, okay? And of that revenue, $6,400 of it is coming from fees that are $200 or greater right now, okay? And I asked the question, how many?
And how many businesses does that involve?
It was 46 fees over the five, you know, it was, yeah. So the total dollars represented by these licenses greater than 200 was whatever it is, I think I wrote the number down somewhere, but came out to, whoa, I didn't write the total.
$32,000.
Yeah, it was $32,000 was the total, and so we were dividing that by 46.
Wait, $32,000 is the total of what?
Total revenue received for licenses, permits that were being paid greater than $200 to the city over a five-year period.
Over five years?
Correct.
But $10,000 is how much we get each year?
$10,000, how we get, total, how much we get each year. $6,400 is how much is contributed by these fees that are greater than 200.
Right.
And so if we, and there's 46 fees over the five-year period that are involved there.
Oh, so it's not 46 every year?
Correct. So the way you ended up figuring that is, the $32,000 divided by 46 is going to get you to like a 695 average per fee, okay? So if I've got 200 as the amount, then I'm giving away 495 per fee in five years. You following that?
Over 46 businesses.
46 businesses times 495 over a five-year period is what we throwing away with that. It comes to $4,500 a year. That, okay, so if I raised, if you raise that fee by $200, then instead of getting, instead of throwing away $4,500 in a year, you're going to throw away half of it.
Why would we choose five years as our period to look at? Do the fee, the permits last five years?
No, they last two. I just wanted to get a long-term average. I mean, they're two, they're two years.
So it looks to me like what we, where we started out was, here are a couple of newish businesses in town that are paying a very high permit because the way our rule is stated, it's going to be half of whatever the state charges.
Right.
We don't know why the state charges so much more for a brew pub than another wine bar, for example. But we say to ourselves, this does not seem fair. And so we were going to lower it for the two businesses. Now it seems like we decided to address this imbalance by saying we're going to raise everybody else so that everybody pays more.
No, no, no. Nobody's getting paid more. Nobody's paying more than they're paying now. Absolutely not. Because the way the wording of the proposed amendment that was in your packet says that you are going to pay whatever you pay now or $200, the lesser of the two. So if I'm currently paying 150 to the city, then I'm still going to pay 150 to the city. The only people that are, the only people that are being impacted with this amendment is going to be people that are going to have their fee reduced. So the discussion today is about whether we want to.
No, I'm talking about your plan.
I know.
Raises.
My plan does not raise the fee on anybody. The wording is, one-half of permit or license fee paid to the state or $200, whichever amount is lower.
Right.
So if they currently are paying 150.
I thought that's what was in the draft.
That's what I propose.
What's in there now?
What's in there now is the red writing. I don't know if you're looking at that version, but the blue writing is what I'm throwing in, the red writing is being thrown out.
So you're no longer limiting it to the brewers?
It's not a question of raising the fee on anybody, it's a question of how much of a discount are we willing to give? That's really what we're addressing. It's what we addressed before, and this is just trying to make it more uniform in application of the law or the code.
So we left it the way it was. It would incentivize the two higher fees.
Correct.
And everybody else would stay the same.
Correct.
And how?
And with the vague, okay, the issue there, like I said, I started at the beginning of it, at a minimum, the red writing was vague in that it says, or license, except for brewer's permit, brew pub license, or license issued for another, or similar business. What is that? And when we have TABC license codes, it would make more sense to just, if you're going to do it that way, and you're going to single out people for favor, then you ought to at least single them out with a code, I mean, with a TABC code.
I guess it was because that was so much higher than the other permits, right?
Right. That was the reason those two were.
Right, that was the idea.
Yeah, that was the reason they were singled out.
And the $200 is just, is new? Because I thought that was in it from the start.
No, that's new.
Oh, okay.
Because what we did was, in the original one, it was going to see.
We were still going to stick with half of the state, except for these few classes.
Except for these two, and then the other vague aspect of it that needed to, I believe needed.
And what were we going to charge them?
That's where the next vague part is.
And do.
In which case, the city shall charge the fee applicable for an on-premises retailer.
Which was like 175.
Right. But there's actually, that I know of, three different on-premises retailer licenses at TABC, and they aren't all the same. So in my, at a minimum, this was said before you actually arrived, at a minimum, the two vague aspects of that, I believe, should be cleared up. And we could, you could do that, that was one alternative that I proposed, to just simply say, a brew pub, a brewer's permit is code, I forget what it is, BE or something silly like that, from TABC, put that in there. And then a brew pub license is some other two-letter code, put that in there. And then say, in which case, the city shall charge the fee applicable for an on-premises retailer code, whatever that is. So that we're precise about what we're charging, because as it stands right now, not only do we not tell, we don't, as a citizen, we don't know which ones are getting reduced specifically, and we don't know what it's going to be charged.
I'd be interested in the other side of the argument.
Who would give that, Mr. McDaniel?
Or maybe Mr. Hayes.
Mr. Hayes.
Did you think that the ordinance as originally amended was vague or difficult to enforce?
I actually drafted the language, and I was fine with it, thinking about how we would administer the ordinance. But in the end, you heard the numbers, it's, for staff, it's immaterial, the amount, it's really more of a policy decision on the part of the council.
The difference between 200 and 500 for a license to serve beer or similar drinks is a drop in the bucket.
But except for the matter of equity?
No, I think everybody pays the same thing, or something similar.
Then the people who are paying 175 now are going to go up to 500.
No, no.
Because it's half of whatever the state charges, so it's conceivable that the state would increase their charge over time, and, but it would still then be capped at 500 regardless of what the state did. Or 400 or 200 or whatever number y'all choose. So it's half of what the state charges. In many cases, these, you know, permits are not very expensive, but as you've noted, for a couple of them, maybe two or three, it's like $3,000 that the state charges. So ours was 1,500, and so this was to bring equity to the situation and charge them similar to what we were charged for somebody that was selling beer and wine.
I guess what's confusing me is how we can achieve our goal of equity. And some people still pay 175, and some people still pay 500.
Well, our goal wasn't to make everybody pay the same. Our stated goal originally in January was to bring two licenses down from 1,500 to 175. That was it.
Something in the interest of equity.
Okay, but it isn't equitable, because the rest of the, there's plenty of licenses, as we just showed.
Around the city that were more than 175, you're saying?
And still are.
And still are.
There's like 20 classifications, there's multiple. And each one's different. And the way I wrote the ordinance was that, we can do what we want as a city, we don't have to follow the state's prescribed format. And again, it wasn't a significant enough number for me to get into that level of detail, so. But.
If you just took out the, if you just, if you leave in for a similar business, the problem with that is that who's going to decide what's a similar business? So I'm suggesting, at a minimum, clean that part up.
Just at one phrase.
That's all I'm saying. I mean, at a minimum, that phrase cleaned up, and then the for an on-premises retailer, just state the code you're trying to get it to. For an on-premises.
Name the types of licenses, whatever their category is.
Is that difficult to do?
No, there's, I mean.
It's not difficult to do. I don't generally recommend it because the state.
Can change.
As soon as they change theirs, then we have to go to others.
Right, that's what I was going to say.
And just when you publish this stuff, we have to go through our code folks, and that is a fee to that.
That's right, they could change.
Which opens the door to the problem as it's written, so which is why we want, I suggested going to the other, which is, it stays exactly as it is now, except we cap it at some number that we decide is reasonable. And so again, nobody's getting a fee raised that way. You're bringing these people down, the unreasonable ones are coming down, and so you're still there. And you don't have to worry about what codes change in the background. The only thing that comes into play is this 50% number, which if the state changes that, it's all messed up anyway, so.
Counsel, have a recommendation?
I do.
Okay.
I recommend putting it in there and raising the cap. I would say go to the 500 that Mr. Ferguson suggested.
And eliminate a similar business?
No, I'm suggesting, put it in as it's presented to us today, one-half of permit or license fee paid to the state or $500, whichever amount is lower, period. All the red writing goes away. That actually gets you to equitable, because everybody that's, everybody's getting a reduction that's above that number.
Is that enforceable, Mr. Hayes? Is that clear and enforceable? Okay? Any?
I move we adopt that.
Wait, he just moved that, right?
I didn't actually say it in the motion, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. You're moving it, Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, I will move so.
All right. We have a motion to change as mentioned, to amend as mentioned.
And I'll second that.
And motion carries four to one.
How did that, that recorded me as voting no, I think.
No, no.
Oh, is that?
It had Vincent.
Oh, it was some, okay, it wasn't me, okay.
Okay.
Apologize for slow eyes.
Item number 6A, is that where we are? Is second reading of ordinance number 2018-04, amending the zoning code for the city of Kerrville, Texas, by revising the definition of home occupation and adopting regulations for that use containing a savings and severability clause, providing for a maximum penalty of fine of $2,000, ordering publication, providing other matters relating to the subject. And Mr. Paxton, no changes since?
We've got two changes that were requested at the last council meeting. If you look at the ordinance on page two.
Yeah. Yeah.
Under section two A, under the standards of operation, we added, "One employee, other than the occupants, may be on the premises at one time." So, they, they have multiple employees, one can be there at a time, but not getting into part-time, full-time.
Right.
Yep. That's, that's good by me.
Yeah.
And if you look at page three, subsection H, "Sales to customers who visit the residence may occur not more than four times per calendar year." So, that for some of your larger events.
Topperware, topperware.
You could have sales at the home.
And Mary Kay.
If your sales go to your customer's house, it would not be prohibited at that point.
Doesn't even count.
Correct. With those two changes, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
I think that's what we talked about last time, counsel. Any other discussion? I don't see any here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do want to discuss, sorry. I didn't know that's what I did.
Mr. Brody, surprise, surprise.
Surprise, surprise.
Because it just came up.
Oh, okay. I see where we're going. Okay, so, I'm not attempting to sway votes, I'm just making a statement. So, similar to the alcoholic beverage ordinance, I just think we should evaluate these things as they come up, for the ambiguities that are in there, due process, technical consistency in legal enforcement, as well as the policies. But again, I'm, in the, this proposed amendment appears to be inconsistent in its application when it prohibits activities that have no, absolutely no perceivable impact on the residential character, such as barbering within my home, while at the same time, we explicitly permit activities that have obvious impact on the residential character, such as permitting signs for the business outside the home. And that just seems like a contradiction there. The proposed amendment also allows for a non-resident employee, as you just mentioned, to office within the dwelling housing, dwelling housing, the home occupation. For that non-resident, this makes the dwelling a place of business, or a job, not a home occupation, which means a business is being established within the residential zone. And lastly, this one's more of a Texas thing, but Texas has historically been a staunch defender of private property rights. And within this ordinance, the city appears to be violating the, the Private Real Property Rights Preservation Act without real due process. Without going into details, because it's, nobody really wants to hear them. This could create difficult, excuse me?
You don't want to take the time?
No, because I'm not, like I say, I'm, I'm, I'm attempting to just make the statement and address these problems after the fact. I'm not holding up the process here. I'll gladly talk to you about it afterwards, if you'd like. So, you know, reasonable people can disagree on policy, which is part of this, but, but we can't really disagree on technical aspects of writing consistent, enforceable codes. So, having said that, that's basically the, answering the why question of why I'm about to vote a dissenting vote on this proposal.
You, you're not amending it?
No, I'm, I'm not.
Okay.
Tilt any windmills up here, I'm just making a statement.
And Mr. Vogel, you're next.
Yeah, I just want to say that, after discussing this with some individuals in the community, I'm starting to feel less comfortable with this ordinance. I don't want to hold this up, but I don't feel that it really fits our vision statement that we've come up with from the comprehensive plan. And after we get to the comprehensive plan, I'd like to hopefully revisit this.
And we might could do it. I, I would just make the statement that this, this was carefully discussed in planning and zoning, very, very thoroughly, I listened to it, I think we all did. And I think we narrowed it down, too, as a council, that the, these amendments as stated would not, in effect, change the character of the neighborhood. Traffic, you know, was, was an issue, those kind of things, we, we didn't want to permit. But I, I didn't see where either of these did that. The four times a year might be a little bit difficult to enforce, as are garage sales and those kinds of things. But at least there's a means to do so, if it's, if it becomes abused. So, that's my feeling on that. Anyone else?
I'm, I'm ready to make the motion.
All right.
Somebody did.
Had somebody hit motion?
Me.
Oh, okay, your motion?
I thought George was done.
Okay.
Second.
To approve, is that what it is?
Yes, I move that we approve ordinance two eighteen dash oh four, twenty eighteen.
As amended?
As presented tonight.
And we have the second? And motion carries four to one. Thank you very much, Mr. Paxton. Item number eight, since we already had seven A, is the city manager's report.
Mayor, council coming around right now is a planning calendar that outlines this next year's budget process. Yes, it's, it's that time again, so the staff has already begun internally gearing up for that. This counter, though, will show you how we're trying to integrate our business planning with the comprehensive planning process, and now our budget process, to make sure it all kind of works together. So, if you'll skip to the middle of the page where you see June, June twelfth, you'll get your first draft of the budget, and then we'll have two workshops, like we did this last year, before you get the actual proposed budget in, end of July, August timeframe. So, wanted you to be aware of what that cycle looks like, and, leading up to May, and then beyond May, so that you could plan accordingly.
I had a, a request, I don't think it's a future agenda item, I think it's something we could do in-house for each of us, but I would kind of like to have, and I was thinking about it this week, an overview of where we are for capital assets, and, you know, where we are in that plan progressing this year that we had in the budget, just to kind of see, where are we on the fire truck, where are we on the automobiles, where are we on the streets, per the 2015 plan? Just those kinds of things. If there were any things in parks, and again, this can be done internally, we don't have to have a presentation. If there were any things that they wanted to purchase, just, are we on schedule with all of that? And will all of that be done before we get to that point?
You talking about the 2017 plan?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you for the heads up on all of that. Anything else on yours? Any questions or comments by council? All right. Well, I don't see any other, item number nine would be items for future agenda.
Mayor, we need to, we need to make another appointment to the recovery.
Right.
Community.
That's actually on your next agenda.
Great.
Have we received the second part of that application?
Apparently not in time.
Okay.
I, I don't know how it goofed up.
It's still just the one part?
But I'll, I'll follow up tomorrow.
And I assume that we'll have the presentation from the mayor's youth advisory council on there as well?
Yes.
Okay. After review of that. Anything else, council? All right, then, if not, we're adjourned at six fifty-eight. Thank you all for coming.